Good evening, and welcome to our January 18th Board of Select meeting. Sorry about the few minutes late getting started, but we're having some technical difficulties with our audio and visual equipment, you know, in the modern age. So anyway, all those that can, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Cunningham, will you lead us?
Yes. The Pledge of Allegiance, certified under the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I don't believe we have any additional agenda or calendar items. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the board at this time? Any member? Okay, seeing none, moving on. We have approval of the minutes of the January 4th, 2023 meeting.
We approve the regular meeting minutes of January 4th, 2023 as submitted.
Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Cunningham. Any comments or corrections?
Yeah.
I'll start with Roseanne and then go down the bill.
On the first page, one C, delegation. I think it's just a part of the sentence that's left out. The second line down at the end, the sentence beginning with about 10 years ago, they started assisting people in need of medical equipment throughout the community, using social media too, and then the sentence ends. So I think there's just a part of that phrase that's left out. We might do, using social media to advertise or to raise awareness and assisting people. Anybody else have another suggestion?
It may be that the two doesn't belong there and it's just using social media.
I would just use a social media and end it right there because I don't want to try to guess what they meant.
I think that's wise.
Assisting people in need of medical equipment throughout the community using social media, period.
Heard it.
And then the next sentence would start. So now the next sentence doesn't start quite.
Throughout the years.
That sounds okay to me.
That sounds good. Okay.
Yeah.
Throughout the 10-year span.
Yeah, throughout the years, yeah.
That's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Weber.
Is it appropriate for these to refer back to the YouTube to figure out what their last year is?
Yeah, I think we always can go back to that.
Yeah, I was just going to say if there's some uncertainty there.
Well, here again, the minutes aren't a transcript of the event. It catches the general comment that was made. I don't think we need to go back and adjust that, you know, we're not doing a verbatim.
The only thing I wanted to add, on page four or five, under my ex officio report, the biggest issue for that night was the Affordable Housing Plan with approved and available on the town website. And that wasn't here.
Could you tell me again where that is?
On page four or five, four A ex officio reports.
Okay, yes, I see it.
Under Planning Commission, one of the bullets was missing.
And so what are you bringing out as?
I'm adding Affordable Housing Plan approval and available on town website.
Okay.
As one of the actions taken.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, anybody else?
I was just going to say I was not present at the meeting, but I did listen to the video and review the notes, so I think I can vote.
Okay. Okay, Anne and Dan, you okay with the changes?
Yeah.
Okay, in that case, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions carried unanimously. Moving on, we have the consent agenda.
We approve the consent calendar for the regular meeting of January 18th, 2023, in the amount of $46,739.28.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions carried unanimously. Roseanne, to your comment from the last meeting, Sandy and Sarah from Tax Officer Working on to get in that very, it's tough to do it, but if we can get a couple more words in there for like a big overpayment like we had tonight and so forth to address those.
Yes, that was $40,000 rebate.
Yeah.
So I think, I voted on it tonight, but in the future, I do feel that we need more of that.
The question I had on that, when I was reviewing the minutes, is we didn't really say how much a big consent, a big line item is. Do we want to set a dollar limit at $2,000, $5,000?
Well, the thing is, at this time of year, we could make them action items. Because right now, what happened in this particular case here, the people, I know the situation because Sarah came in to explain it to me, people basically paid their taxes in July for the entire year, and then they came back to pay it again now, and then oops, nope, you've overpaid, and then they send it back. So it's a very simple one. It's not as if, you know, anything like that. So it's a simple one, so. I think if we could just get a little more explicit, you know, put maybe like a carrot next to something with a little explanation in it.
Yeah, all I'm saying is, do we want to set a threshold for anything over $2,500, $5,000? I mean, what do we, we don't want to earmark $400, but to some people, $400 is something. So do we want to set a threshold for what that dollar value is?
Trouble is, there might be a couple of times during the year where we could, there's numerous, you know, long, especially when it comes down to car taxes and so forth, we could spend a lot of time. I mean, we can always, if there's something on there that we want more discussion of, we can always remove it from the consent agenda.
Okay.
That's as simple as that.
Well, I think two separate requests for refunds, one for $20,000 and the other for $20,500. To me, that's a standout. That's pretty excessive and to the same two corporations. So I don't think, I think we could use some common sense here, but I think that something like that, I find it hard to believe that somebody pays an extra $20,000, in this case an extra $40,000, and doesn't know that they overpaid.
Well, here again, it's an LLC, so it could be, you know, it could be the bank doing it or something like that. Okay, I wouldn't like to say, do you want to say like $10,000 or above, but then if we make all those action items, it does add to the agenda and so forth like that to approve.
I'm not, I'm saying to your point about a carrot, we care for clarification.
Okay.
I'm just saying, if you're going to put a carrot in clarification, do you want to, do you want to set a dollar value for anything over $5,000 needs an asterisk or, I mean, I'm proposing, I'm not saying one way or the other.
Okay, let's, let me come up with something for this, rather than discuss it for 10 minutes and, you know, I'll talk to the tax collector and get some input from them too. So before.
Yes, I agree. I think we can get some information from the tax collector as to what are the typical scenarios that we shouldn't be so maybe concerned about and that introduce a.
Well, okay, I'll go back, we'll go back and review the last several ones and see how, you know, what we have for, because there are times when the bottom line is extremely high because there's, you know, 15 or 20, but.
But it may be as simple as that, is that line items have, you know, overpayment attached, whatever it is, just a code one, two, three, four, and simple.
Again, let me talk to the tax collector and see what they recommend because we're, we asking them to do the extra work.
Sorry, I didn't mean to beat you to that.
I'm trying to recall, when we did this previously, I think we had a cutoff of $10,000. If it was more than $10,000.
Okay.
There may be a typical and easy explanation.
Yeah.
What happens is twice a year, and we're on the cusp of when the real estate payments are due.
Tax seasons are.
Right, and you have financing and there's money escrowed, the bank will pay the taxes and then sometimes at a closing, the seller will pay it again, and you'll end up with double payment, and then they have to recoup that. And it's easy to happen in June and in January, so that could be the reason.
Okay, moving on from the longest consent agenda ever, but.
Epic, epic.
Epic, yeah. The Ethics Policy Acknowledgement Form, we've come up with something that will be able to be signed, and at the bottom of it will, you know, basically the ethics code and policy, and it'll say at the bottom, you know, employee slash board commission member's name, and then signature and date. We have sent it off to the attorney for a final, you know, thumbs up on it to make sure everything's okay with it, and I did send out an email today indicating, you know, because I was out of the office for a couple of days, that we weren't able to finish up with that today. So we'll be bringing that back for a vote at the next meeting.
So this would be for, applicable to all new employees when they were hired?
It'll be all new employees, and we're going to, we're going to have to go and also look at having all current employees go back and sign it as well because, you know, that has been done. They are doing it now as it is, all the current ones that are coming in, but we want to have a standardized form for both boards, commissions, and employees.
And would you be in contact with the Board of Education to see if they might consider doing more works?
I'm sure that, you know, I'll see what their policy is, and I'm sure that they'll, you know, they review theirs on a very regular basis, I'm sure I can mention it to them. Moving on to EV charging stations, we were, in fact, the one piece of documentation you have in your packets today, that changed as the day went on today. It's been constantly changing with the, with the sort, with the people that are doing the work for us and so forth like that, as far as the cost changing. We have found out that instead of four, we're probably going to get two because the, been a significant increase in costs, out-of-pocket costs for the, to get four with the three-phase power that we had hoped for. So Alex, rather than try and put everything together this afternoon in about a three-hour timeframe, has decided, we decided it'd be better to hold off on that until either the next meeting or a future meeting when he has everything lined up and all the facts are completely good because, as I said, what's in here now, Sandy got something different at the end of the day from Alex, so it's better to hold off on that.
As I was reviewing this yesterday and today, the town, does the town get a portion of this money?
No, as far as from the charging station.
Right, so when somebody comes in to use a charging station, they use an ID card or something?
No, they would, you could use a credit card, you know, some type of an app you'd be able to use, and the town would get, whatever the charge is for that would be the town's money. So basically, if we charge X amount per kilowatt or whatever like that, the town would get that funding, get that funding. And here again, it wouldn't be something to really make a lot of money on, but it would offset the cost of having them there and so forth like that.
Because we want to recoup our cost for.
Yes, exactly. Because there's, I think, I'd have to go back and look, but I think there's an $1,800 cost for the licensing every year, so you want to recoup that, that cost and so forth like that. And you could build a small one to possibly recoup the cost of what our out-of-pocket expense would be moving forward as well to have them installed.
So it would offset our expenses.
Yes. But I'll defer to Alex on that to when we have a much better idea of what exactly is being done.
I just want to know what questions to ask.
Okay, well, you'll have that well in advance. Moving on, the next thing, and we have talked about this in the past, is the public safety building exterior sealant. We have the document. I met with, with Bill Share, Joe Braga, Mr. Petricelli, Bill Silver from Silver Petricelli, and the police chief back on the ninth of the month. And he went through this document here and discussed to us what are some of the options. So this is what for you to take a look at, and probably if not the next meeting, the following one, he'll be coming in to discuss the results of their investigation and their analysis too. You'll see, the one thing that everybody at that meeting was in favor of, as was Mr. Silver, was the first cost for $72,863 to seal the building. That cost also includes the money we appropriated for the architecture review as well, so that's inclusive of that, and that does have a contingency. He did a really nice presentation that showed that even with a little bit of water that has gotten in since they've moved in, there's been no interior damage to the building, and he'll show exactly why this is probably the best fit to the building and to keep it, you know, to seal it up. The back of the building has some areas that if they were facing the road, you might want to do a little more work on it for cosmetic purposes, but the sealant they put on it will be perfect, so there's no thought to have anything repointed in that backyard and so forth. But he'll be coming in, not only with his presentation, but part of our, when we awarded them the contract for the architect to review this, they will do the bidding too, so when they come to us, they will have bids for us. So everything will be done when they come to us. So they're going to get ready to go out to bid within the next couple of weeks, do their bidding and coming back to us when that's done. So if you have any questions on this, just, I would say, keep them, and so you'll have them to ask Mr. Silver when he's here for his presentation. Anything else that?
I just have one other.
Yes.
Question on it. Do we have any indication that this is any kind of a product flaw, that this has happened to any other buildings that they've worked on that have developed the same problems?
No, it's the type of facing, we have that split face brick on the facade, and those are very porous, and this is something very common in that, in the type of building that is there. It has nothing to do with the work that was done on it, and it's the type of building that they need to be sealed probably every 10 to 12 years.
But it hasn't done that long.
This wasn't sealed when, this was not part of the reconstruction or the renovation of the building initially.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on. Penny, you and your commission have the floor for a few minutes.
Thank you.
And I think we have to, we have gotten our, and it's right out in the hall here, our bronze award this year, and Penny, you and your group have pretty much a tremendous amount to do with that. So thank you for your endless work and everything you continue to do to make the town more responsive in that area. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm here.
And forget your name and address.
Oh, Penny Howell Heller. Do I have to give my address or anything?
You don't have to.
Okay, I don't know how formal this is.
We all know that, yeah.
In your agenda packet, I included a list of actions submitted for the town's second round of certification for the Sustainable Connecticut Program. I did that primarily so that you could see how extensive the program is and how extensive the town activities are to meet the requirements. And to put this in a statewide perspective, to date, right now, 130 of the 169 towns in Connecticut have registered for this program. And in Connecticut, unlike other states like New Jersey and Massachusetts, this, we are town-oriented. Other states go by county or whatever, but we're town-oriented. So about three-quarters of the town in Connecticut have registered for the program, but that means that the town officials have signed up to participate. However, of that 130, only 59 have gone on to achieve certification, so we're in a smaller group. 33 have received bronze, 26 have received silver. They just started, expanded the program. You can go to gold, which is unachievable, but we'll see. And they also have a thing called Climate Leader that I think is very interesting. It's a special certification for climate remediation programs. So today, the program has provided, in case people, I'm not going to go into what the whole thing is about, you can ask questions if you want to. I'm going to assume everybody kind of gets the gist of what this is about. The program has provided a blueprint for funding as well, because they're associated with a community match grant program, which they walk you through, and the town has received six grants. The total money that has come in through that process is $77,353, which is, you know, not that much money, but it's not pocket change either. But what it is really is seed money for the projects that got the funding, and all of these projects have used the money that they received, about $15,000 to start their programs and leverage that to get more grants. A good example of that is Eastline Giving Garden, that has received three grants through this program and has leveraged that to get a tremendous amount of support, both in materials and money, because they were able to hit the ground running, get the equipment they needed. Another example is the Eastline Pollinator Pathway Program that needed to get some equipment, some seeds, and to pay some people to get started. And once they've gotten started, they now have six or seven or eight pollinator garden projects going in town, including a large one that's just gotten off the blocks at the prison, and the prisoners will be helping them with that and saving the Department of Correction a lot of time and money mowing, which is why they really sought out this program to work there. So just, you know, in summary, the other thing that I think Sandy got to you rather late today is a list of all the things we could have done that's available for certification. So we've kind of barely taken advantage of the very many low-cost, no-cost resources that are offered through this program. For example, in topic seven, the energy efficiency topic, which we scrambled to get finished at the last second, we could have go on in future to facilitate use of UConn's audit program so that we can ID which town buildings might be most worth updating. Unfortunately, the town Eastline was very forward-thinking, and we did an awful lot of solar panels and the townwide solar panel program in 2015. We don't get any credit for that because it was too early. This program started in 2017, and so if, but if we wanted to continue to do that, this audit program that is run by a professor up at UConn, she will give us use of her engineering grad students to help us out, and it becomes very formulaic as far as they're concerned. So that's one thing that we could do in the future. Another issue is topic six, transportation. We had hoped to get some credit for the EV stations, but they're planned, they weren't completed, so we didn't get any credit for that. But Harvey and myself took some training, and so we got points for that. But we'd like to continue and maybe use the DOT Complete Street Plan to our benefit so we can maybe deal with some of the parking issues or help, you know, go through the plan. The whole point of this is that volunteers, and there's three of us in the Natural Resources Mission technically working on this, but I enlisted 11 to 15 residents of the town that helped me write this. I didn't do this myself. The farmers were terrific. They really provided an awful lot of help. We got a lot of credit in Section 5 for agricultural, to their forum, and for some other projects that they were doing. We'd like to do more of that and get some volunteers in here to organize and do some of these projects that this program is designed to make it so that the town can do some of the things that the staff can't quite get to. Maybe we can do some lead work, some data collection, or some other projects like that that would facilitate some of the work that the staff does and get some of these resources to our benefit. So that's all I have to present. I'm more than happy to answer questions.
And I know, coming down to the wire, how much work was going on here, and I think what you did, you made a really good point, is how getting that, you know, the bronze, you know, award has helped out, not just, so many other agencies in town that, you know, we depend on it and so forth, so I think you did a really good job of.
I think it puts the town in a very nice little.
Yeah.
Group that, that we care about what the town looks like. We'd like to be energy efficient, save some money, do things in a sustainable way. We have an awful lot of very nice natural resources that attract people to the town, and we'd like to highlight that.
Thank you. Any questions for Penny?
I was just going to add, because Natural Resources is one of my ex officios, and I've been familiar with this work that's been ongoing. Now, some of the things that, one of the things that we learned that you didn't mention is that many of the things that we proposed couldn't get credit for.
Yeah, we submitted about 290 points and we got about 230, just to put that, people talking about silver. Silver used to be 400 points, now they made it 500. So we're nowhere near that. Each thing that we do, this long list of activities, as you can see, you get like 10 points, five points. Harvey put together an entire interactive website for all of the tourist things available in the town. You get five points for that. I mean, you know, you really have to go the mile in order to make the points. The other thing is, there was some issues that some of the town data was not published, and they have a strict rule that if you're using town data, it has to be available to the public. I had gotten some data, and it was my mistake, I should have known, and I needed three years' worth of data, only two years were published, 2021 wasn't published, so we got in trouble for that. And there was a couple other issues like that.
But one of the things is that whatever the project is, it needs to show town involvement.
Yes, that was the other thing we lost, and which I think is unfair. The Indigenous Day Program, which was a marvelous thing, was not advertised through the town. So we didn't get any credit for it. And I'm thinking, wow, okay.
All you would have had to done is put it on the website.
I know, yes.
Because I know I had, we did have it in some places, but not on.
Yeah, I advertised all the other talks that we gave, and I just didn't get that one. So they're very, the point of this, and it seems like it's very arbitrary and kind of a pain, they're trying to get the town staff and the town mechanisms out into the public and involved, and they're rather sticklers about it. So that's their reasoning. The other thing is that I talked to Gary this afternoon, and it would be very nice if we could have some workspace here. I realize space is really tight, and that would make it easier for us, or anybody here, to work with the staff when they have time, when they're here, not to try to, you know, bound on their door and interrupt them. That was just something to put in the future. He said something about clearing out a storage closet for us, and I think he meant that nicely, but I understand, because there was a few times here where I tried to come and talk to people and work here, and I was literally told I had to leave, because there was no room for me to sit here and work. It was a little difficult.
So now to get to the silver level, which would theoretically bring in more money for more projects, what does the town need to do?
Well, all I can say is that we, we've got 200 and some points, and now a silver is 500 points, so twice as much. And each one is 10 or 15 points. You know, there are some things in here that are 40 points. We got 105 points for our natural resources work, and that was the easy part, because that's what I know about. So there, as I pointed out, transportation is difficult because an awful lot of it is mass transit and things, but if we could work on some parking plans, I know that's some of the issues the town has to deal with. And the state has an entire Complete Streets Plan, and they mapped it all out, you know, we could at least start with that.
Andy, how do you?
Yeah, just, Penny, I was thankful for the information. I was just wondering if any of the ARP funding of, for example, Main Street or Giving Garden goes into the points at all? Because I noticed, for example, like Action 2 about thriving local economies, and then talks of other places, similar, similarly. Just wondering if that, because for example, it states here, there was a letter of support in activities of Eastline Main Street.
Yeah.
Organization, but there was a lot more. So for example, you know, there was the funding by, from American Rescue Plan for the Main Street.
Yes, I just, I abbreviated, I did submit a list of what the Main Street does and the fact that the town supports it. So, yeah, that was, I didn't mean to minimize that.
No, that's okay. I just, you're just wondering if that omens anything. For example, businesses did receive funding and support.
Well, we could, that was what we, you know, you could get a maximum of five, of 10 points for that, and actually, you could get five or 10, we got the maximum amount for that.
Okay.
But there, and the other list, the list here, we could do, implement sustainable purchasing, and there's steps, you know, that, that's just the title, and then inventory and promote local retail options. So there. So there's other things we could have done under that. The CPACE program we did the last time around, but all we did was join the program. And what that does is help commercial businesses get through the Green Bank and the state, get alternate energy, solar panels usually, or some kind of energy efficiency. And that's, and if you can participate and promote that to local businesses, you get another 10 or 15 points for that. We could certainly do that.
I think going forward, certainly in 2023, where some of the money that was allocated in 2022 for businesses, for some organizations within town, in support of them, that may help in that next year.
That's nice, yes, because we have three years before we have to do this again. So, yes, that, we can show that.
And that's clearly documented.
Documented all over the website and everywhere else, so.
Good, great, yeah.
All right, any other questions for?
I'm just going to comment that at the last meeting, we heard a presentation from a local group now known as the Blue Door, which has gotten a 501(c) to distribute used medical equipment at no charge. Now, something like that, in order to get any credit for that.
It has to be sponsored and somehow supported through the town.
So if the town, if the town gave them a storage space for equipment?
If they gave them, you know, material help, money.
In the services to the community, they're in for 20, I put them in for 25. I've been trying to look for a, we don't have a storage space for them, but we've been trying to work with some of the local merchants that have open spaces. And it's not been very good, but we're looking at it.
I need to, or one of us needs to know that that happens. And sometimes I have a hard time tracking that down. And that's the communication. Of course, it takes two to communicate. I have to come and knock on your door and say where various monies going. So, but as long as the town has supported it in some way, then, yeah, it counts. So, and we've gotten a lot of that. I mean, the pantries work and everything is a big part of this. For the Food Network, that's in Action Ten. This is all over the place, and that's what I didn't realize when I got into it. I figured it was just natural resources, but it really is 12 topics. And we even got into homelessness, which was.
It's everything.
Yes.
Well, you're the right person to do it, Penny, too. I mean, you've, and your group have done it, Harvey, you've all done.
I have a lot of helpers.
Yeah, so.
So process-wise, you have, we now have bronze for three years, and then three years from now, we have to submit another package?
Yes, the certification gets updated every, every three years. The only difference is whether you are certified or not, which is why there's a lot of towns that just register, because you have to at least register, which means it's a letter that the first electorate of the mayor signs. But if you're not certified, the staff is not willing to really help you. So all of their resources, and they have staff to help you. They have formats that they'll give you. They arranged for us to talk to the UConn professor and potentially, if we followed up on it, gotten help of their grad students. That kind of thing is only for the certified towns. So that's what you get with certification.
So you're going to spend the next three years collecting all this information so that three years from now, you can submit another one?
Yeah, keeps me away from late-night TV.
You're not missing anything. Don't worry.
So now, we can, from now, so now we got the silver, the silver award. For the next three years, we can build.
Oh, from the bronze, yeah.
So something that, so something that we do this year, I mean bronze. So something that we do this year will still be good for the next three years.
Yeah, yeah, and actually, some of these takes, like, for instance, if we get any credit for the amount that we recycle, you need three years of data to show that. And that was the problem, is that I had three years, but the last year wasn't published. So it has to be published. So, you know, and if I'd been able to get that, then that would have been. And the Affordable Housing Plan was only planned as of August this year.
That's been approved now, so.
Now it's approved, so the good news is I can.
Yeah, now you can use it for the next one.
Yeah, and EV stations, hopefully in three years.
Oh, they'll, yeah, they'll be in in three years, for sure. All right, anyone else? Come on, Laura, nothing?
So we'll be, not everybody's doing.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, anytime. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Penny?
Yes.
Before you leave, would you introduce the rest of the commission that's here tonight? I'm not sure everybody knows who people are.
Harvey Dean and Laura Ashram, and my other helper was Harvey's wife. And as I say, I can do this alone. There were a lot of people who.
No, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, just for discussion. Last week, there was a, and here again, I thought at first this is going to be a highway diversionary plan for I-95 regarding the construction coming up. It isn't. This was interesting though, because it's a highway diversionary plan for when the road has to be shut down. This is not for construction. This is strictly for incidents like an accident or a spill or something up there. And they were really, the state was really looking for input from the town because one of the diversions had people getting off of 95 at the Oil Mill Road exit, coming down Oil Mill Road, getting on Route One, and the thought of, that's not a really good road for large vehicles. Also having people getting off at Society Road. They've said, no, we've, you know, with our input and so forth, they said, okay, that will not be a diversionary place. If something happens between Exit 73 and 74, or between 73 and 74 northbound, there'll, you know, there's some traffic that would get off there, but they would divert everybody off at Rocky Neck. And then up to FMR and then up to Route One, because they didn't want to have people that long ride, 156, because then it gets hard coming back in. So it was really interesting, and it's constantly being updated. And they did give us the ability to look at videos of the state traffic control center up in, there's one in Bridgeport, and then the headquarters up in Newington. It was really interesting. So what would I like to, is the fact that they were looking for input from us. Then they went to Waterford because, you know, we have the Rocky Neck exit and Exit 74. They're the only two that they're going to consider for diversionary here. And if there's an accident, say, in, that affects the 390, southbound, where 395 and 95 come together, they, it would take a while to set up. And they, what they plan is within an hour to have all these diversions set up. People would be exited off up on Route 85 and sent all the way up to Route 161 in Monville because if you got them back on anywhere else, they'd be right at that 395, 95. So that'd be the only way around. A long one, but the best one. So, you know, as they pointed out, this, you know, it's not a good road to have any diversion on, but they do have a plan and how it goes into effect. So there will be coming up a 161 meeting, which we'll be talking about the other one as well, because Manafort has now been given the contract for the interchange of Exit 74, 161. So we do anticipate some news on that quickly. So any questions on that? I mean, it was just a very interesting meeting, and it was nice for the state eliciting, what do you think of this? And people, no, this doesn't good. The chief police was here, Joe Bergall was there. The CO and the commanding officer for Troop E up in Monville was there. So we did have a lot of good representation of people who have knowledge of, you know, diversionary and where vehicles would be best sent if we needed to. And like I said, the idea was if they get off at Exit at Rocky Neck, not to send them all the way through town and around that way, because it'd be easier just to send them back up to FMR, Four Mile River, than back up to Route One. So, anyway, the only other thing we have on the agenda is call for a town meeting. And this is for the.
Notice is hereby given of a special town meeting of the Town of East Line to be held on February 1st, 2023 at 7:00 PM Eastern Time at the East Line Town Hall Upper Meeting Room for the following purposes. One, to consider and act upon a special appropriation in the amount of $19,176.20 to cover the cost of purchasing the below-listed equipment for the Emergency Operations Center. Maximum standard dispatch laptop, complete with installation, setup, software, and card printer. This EOC communication system and card printer are essential for operations during a man-made or natural disaster event. Two, to transact any other business proper to come before the meeting, dated at East Line, Connecticut, this 18th day of January, 2023.
Sorry, second?
Second.
Seconded by Dan. Before we move forward, this is one of the, this is grant money, but we have to go through the process. We held this for a month, hoping that we'd have more items to take to a town meeting. We don't. And Julie has said, you know, she's got a price hold on this, and so we have to move it. But this is one of the items being addressed in the Charter Revision Commission is to make grants and not have to go through this approval process, which not only, you know, is more lengthy, but it does involve the cost of putting the ad in the newspaper as well, so. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, it carries unanimously. Moving on, ex officio reports. Bill will start at your end tonight.
Planning was rescheduled for next week, so I do not have a report.
Okay, Ann?
No report.
Okay, Ann Santoro?
Yes, I do have a report for the East Line Library Board of Trustees. A good meeting last Monday. The, a number of items, but I'll just highlight a couple here. Libraries, like every other department, working on its budget. I believe Lisa Timothy had a meeting with you. Yes, and so the budget, their budget is, at this point, is looking at about 1.2 million, but that's a first draft, maybe up about four-plus percent. More to come on that. I was very impressed with this Wi-Fi hotspots that the library has, they've installed two hotspots, and now they've ordered two more, and they'll circulate these. And they're becoming very, they are very much in use. And the libraries worked with Care and Share to determine those that most need them, you know, should come first. So this was, I think, a great, you know, a great initiative by the library, and glad to see that they're continuing and augmenting it. There was a recent meeting between the library staff and the high school library staff and high school students. The idea is to try to inform the students and the staff as to what the resources that the library has. So, you know, kind of a good sharing of resources. Hopefully, it will be improved between the two coming up. According to Lisa, the RFQ for the Community Center Feasibility Plan, as you recall, that was an ARP project, a funded project. That is, I think, perhaps going out this week, so that's a good thing. And otherwise, if you haven't looked at it or don't get a copy in the email, there is the East Line Library Newsletter that comes out, and it's really, they've really improved the formatting of it. It's much easier to read, and it seems a bit more interesting to look at. You can get it, it can be emailed to you directly, or if you just click on events on the library website, it'll more or less pop up. But that's very helpful, and there's so many things going on. So many programs, just about something for everyone. So recommend taking a look at that newsletter.
Good newsletter. I was at the library today. They have it right outside the library. They have some paper copies, yeah, if people want paper.
Yeah, that's great.
Mr. Cunningham?
I attended the Parks and Recreation meeting as their ex officio, and there was quite a bit of discussion on their, well, they acknowledged that they received copies of the ethics document and that they were all familiarizing themselves with it and reviewing it. They, they are discussing the, and revising their rules and fees at the meeting. And one of the items that they discussed is how do you define a person under their rules, regulations? And so there was quite a bit of discussion about that and trying to decide how you define who, who, you know, should be able to buy a pass.
Oh, resident, yeah.
A resident. So they defined a person as a resident and their immediate family members who live with them as primary residents in East Line. So they spent a lot of time trying to come up with a fair way to determine who should be able to buy passes as a resident or not. What else? Mrs. Kumro, she was mentioning that she's still working with the people that are interested in the pickleball courts and that that's really now being referred as a capital improvement item. So we'll see where that goes. What else? And they reviewed the fees for renting the pavilion and the band shell. And those fees are going to go up a little bit in view of the costs for maintaining those items. So that's about it.
Mrs. Hardy?
That they covered.
Okay.
Yes, tonight's discussion on the Sustainable, Connecticut Sustainability Grant, I think is just one of the examples of the ways that many of our residents are employed in volunteer work. The historical group sponsored Kotluk Supper. I think it was last Friday or Saturday. And there were probably 45 to 50 people there representing the various volunteer groups or subcommittees in town. And it was pretty amazing. Most of them gave brief reports. But Brookside Farms, Samuel Smith, Lee House, the Giving Garden Agriculture Business, Pollinator Pathways, Historic Cemetery, Nyanic River Watershed Agency, all talking about what they've done for the town over the past year. And those were just, so to speak, the heads of the committees. That, it's tremendous. It's what makes East Line a great town. We have so many people that volunteer their time and also, many times, their money. Spending money out of their own pockets because we really don't fund these groups with the amount of funding that they should get to support these activities. So it was just, just very encouraging and very motivating. And it's unfortunate that we didn't have it on tape so that people could watch, could watch it and see how they might be able to get involved. But as I said, I think, when you think of the number of people in this town that volunteer for boards, commissions, and these subgroups, and what they contribute to the town. And I think that, as I said, I think that's one of the things that makes East Line a great little town.
Thank you. Okay, that was it? Okay. Moving on, just quickly, because we want to get to the last item. Fairhaven Bridge, that is going to be, obviously, on Fairhaven Road over the Paget River there. There's a study going on right now because the state now is basically going to fund this and pay for it 100%. Basically, federal funds funnel through the state. The design work is going to be done this year and fiscal year 2023 and the rest of 2023, with construction probably starting in around 1919, yeah, 2026 or 2027. And again, fully funded. The town has to basically allocate the design funds upfront, but that'll get refunded as well. A letter has been sent out to everybody, you know, asking for their input as well because as we move forward, once the design is done, it'll be presented to the people, we'll be notified. So there'll be a presentation on that, too. The letter that initially went out, that I signed and I read, and they give you a bullet one that you basically, you know, make for your town. And it said the Town of East Hartford, which is what we mailed to everybody with my signature on it. So I, we have sent that out to all the people correcting it. And I said, look, I'm sorry, my mistake. You know, if I review something for my signature, I got to make sure that it's all done right. So we've corrected that, so it's going out. But that is something that will be done. And the nice thing is, is the state and the feds will ask for our input as to what leads up to this, too. So it won't just be the bridge. There'll be several presentations coming up. You get to kind of pick the type of railings and so forth like that. So we do get some input. And it's, but the design is ultimately decided by the state with town input. But the nice thing is, is it doesn't cost us anything. And that bridge does need to be replaced and widened a little bit. So for the next couple of years, sadly, those wonderful orange cones will still be there, but we are going to be looking at taking care of that. TBCCA announced today at the Cog meeting that they have some additional resources now for fuel and energy assistance. So they've helped out people now, not only with fuel and energy, but with water and sewer, too. There's several people in town that had problems with being able to pay their water and sewer bills, and they have stepped up and helped out. So they did say that, let everyone know that they have some additional resources. Also at that meeting, the hazard. Also at that meeting, the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update, Fourth Edition presentation was made. That's got to be done, we saw a little bit, but this is the follow-up to that. So we're going to get a copy of the presentation, say I'll forward that to everybody. I mentioned it to Penny, I'll get it to her as well too. And Dave Murphy, who works for UConn and is involved in this, said, there's a lot of money out there for this now for improving that. So he's a great resource, so once we get that, we'll take a look at that. They also pointed out that we have lots of grants from the Department of Energy, Emergency Management, Homeland Security at the state level in this area. But as of right now, the Cog is about $300,000 in arrears in payments from the, that they're, from the state. So they're going to have to slow down some of their work in that area until some of the grant money starts coming through again. The Main Street, last, you know, talking about Main Street and parking, last week ago, Friday the 6th, I met with the Mitchells, the Yale Shretz Society and Main Street Organization to look at the movie theater for some ideas. They're going to come back with some ideas, they're talking about dinner theater, you know, you could have some live stuff there, you know, a multipurpose type of a place. I also took them across the street, it was just me and the Yale Shret people, to look at the Dominion Building. They're going to come up with some thoughts and some options for us to present at some point in time. So I was thinking maybe late March, early April, presenting to the town some thoughts and get the input for what we, how we move forward with the Dominion Building, whether it's something, we keep the property, the building has to, they went through the building and said, oh, the cost of rehabbing this building would outweigh the cost of taking it down. So basically looking at what if we kept it, put something up there and rented it out, maybe use the parking lot for, between Memorial Day and Labor Day, pay parking. You know, they're going to come up with several different options to, where it'll be a town resource and, you know, not avoid losing that little bit of visibility. We maybe want people to be able to walk over there, go around the back of it, look out over the lake, over the lake, over the sound and so forth. So that'll be moving forward. Regarding parking, with five churches open, I have, and Gourmet Gallery and so forth, I have taken some concerns, not complaints, people just having some concerns about the amount of parking on Grand Street to where the employees of some of the places are parking on Grand Street. And it's public parking, you can't stop them, but we're going to look at talking to Citizens Bank to see, they have that lot next to the firehouse to where there's probably a 15 or 20 parking spots to where maybe the employees could park there and free up some spots on Main, on Grand Street for the people that live there, because some of them now have lost the ability to have, you know, park in the street. So we're going to be looking at that. Also, five churches with opening, they, people have been parking in a family pizza parking lot and then walking over. We've talked to them, they're going to take care of that moving forward, you know, five churches going to tell people, please don't park in the parking lots of other restaurants, and maybe put up some signage moving into the family pizza lot. So that. Agenda is, one of the things, as I pointed out, we were trying to get stuff today. Sandy brought this to my attention. The policy is if we don't have it by noon, and supporting documentation by noon on Thursday, it doesn't go on the agenda unless it's an absolute emergency. We're going to have to start adhering to that because people are coming in later and later. You give them a little bit longer, and then it doesn't give us a chance to get you the information, I may not get a chance to review it. So looking at that. Budget, we got a little bit of good news on our budget today. We had budgeted 12% for healthcare costs. Now we're being told 8% to 10%. So we could be looking at, just our side, about a $62,000 to $65,000 savings in that area alone. So that would help out. Because right now for budgets, we're at, just on what's been submitted, I haven't started taking the red pen to it yet, is 6.5%. That's going to have to come down. And the Board of Ed, I was, went to their meeting, I was ex officio, theirs is at 6.97. That's the superintendent's budget to his board, so looking at that. On another topic, pickleball courts, yes, it is in the capital budget. And I've gotten, in fact, I'll have to forward an email to you, I got an email today saying, please forward this to members of the Boards of Selectment and the Board of Finance. I think there's, there's pretty good support for, I mean, the people, it's, it's an ongoing thing, it's getting better and better. And these people really compete when they play too, I've got to say that. It's not, oh, let's just go have a little fun, they really play hard. Rena Powers from the Blue Door, I met with them, and I said, I told her we'd put them down for 2,500 in the Services to Community. And then they were also at the Power of Giving this, a week ago Wednesday, they got the award, they got $9,200 at that group that they meet a couple of times a year over at the Niannick Community Church. So they got, and I have talked to a couple of people that have storefronts or vacant buildings in town. I wish I could say I had, I got better reception from them, but I haven't, but we're going to keep working on that, so see what we can do to help them out. Regarding the, Penny, Gary did mention to me about, is there a space for you? If we could digitize those files downstairs, there'd be room down there. So this would be a great area to, to support moving in that area. And one other thing too, from the Board of Ed, their deficit is now down to about 455,000. It was up to 677 at one time, so they're moving in the right direction. And it looks like the cyber breach that they had to use is somewhere in the vicinity of about $100,000. They don't have a firm cost on that yet, but somewhere in that area, so that's what we're looking at there. And the final thing is Jen Lindo, who has been downstairs for probably close to two decades in the Planning Zoning Office, is leaving us. She is going to go to work for the Southeast Council of Government as the zoning enforcement area, because she's gotten certification. So this is, really hate to see her go, because she's got some corporate knowledge on there, she's extremely good at what she does. But this will give her a lot more opportunity for advancement and enhancing her skills and so forth. They announced at the meeting this morning, and I, Amanda, the Kennedy, the executive director, I said, you know, you're welcome when she said it, because I said, you're grabbing one of our resources. And here again, Southeast Connecticut Council of Governments cannot find a building inspector to cover the smaller towns. So when we were able to pick up Dave last month, we were very, very fortunate, because they just don't exist out there. So anyway, anything else, anything for me? Any questions? Yes?
The Board of Ed on the cyber threat.
Yes.
And the cost for that.
Yes.
Is that, that's going to have to come out of Board of Ed funds, or is there some company that, or somebody that's going to else be responsible?
Yes, the town.
Yeah.
Because here again, we looked at, we don't have insurance surkma for a cyber breach, and that's what we're investigating right now. There's about a dozen steps you have to have completed before you even qualify to where you can get insurance surkma. We've got about two steps done, and we're not unique in this. You have to have phones that are encrypted, there's a whole lot of work that needs to be done. And what we need to do, look at is the cost of getting this done, you know, worth it considering, you know, what we're having to pay out right now. So that's one of the things Kevin Gervais is going to be looking at as we move forward here, because he's been in contact with Kerman to see what we need to do to do that. He and Dan Cleary are IT Director.
Well, is this still under investigation?
I think it's under, as far as, I'm sure it's still under investigation by law enforcement, but as far as, I think we've remedied our concerns as far as what needs to be done, as far as the cost on our end, or repairs done on our end.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the board now? Yes, sir, please come up and give us your name and address.
Kyle Doughton, and I'm from 5 Rockwall Street. So as, like, as a constituent, everybody goes through a life cycle in a town where you are younger, you start out, you want certain things out of the town, and then you move into another part of your life cycle, and then there's the elderly people or older people that have used a lot of the resources of the town, and then they've fallen off and don't need those resources anymore. I'm here because I'm at that stage where I have two kids, education is a huge thing to me, and I'm starting with the Board of Selectmen because your meeting happened to be tonight, but I'll be at all the boards speaking in about the same level of involvement. And I just feel that in a lot of respects, the town is putting the Board of Education and the students to the side and saying, we spend too much money. The Board of Education, their budget's too high, there's this, there's that. They make a lot of, like, inferences that they're held accountable for all of that. And I don't think it's fair to hold the Board of Education accountable for all of that. While I don't disagree with, or I don't agree with all their spending, I think that there's a lot of town factors that go into what that budget ends up looking like. And one of the most recent things on your agenda has been the Affordable Housing Act or Affordable Housing Plan for the Town of Eastline. And in the last 10 to 15 years, we've added a lot of multifamily homes, either one, two family in one area, or little developments of multifamily homes. And I read through that whole plan, and it talks about demographics, but it doesn't really address the demographics of the families coming in and then how that transponds down through the education system. So it indicates that a lot of these people that are coming into these affordable housing areas or individual homes are one-person people that are going to come into that home. And it's not one person, it's a family. And a lot of them have kids, and a lot of them are being sought after by people to come into different towns. There's a recent article in the day paper where, if I can get, Rebecca DeTuma is part of a group that helps the homeless, people that are from sexual assault victims, things like that, that need to get housing. And she works to bring those people into these types of housing developments. So there's actually marketing out there, bringing these families in because of the town and what we have. The developers of these programs get credit because they're using towns that have good resources. So we have good resources, so therefore they get credit for building this housing development in our town. But we need to pay for that. As these students come in, as politically incorrect as it may be, the demographics of that population tend to be requiring more services from the town, especially the Education Department. A lot of the kids have IAPs, a lot of them have 504 plans. They need the, the services of our town. They need more aides, they need more pullouts, they need a lot of different things from the, the education system. And Mr. Newton has mentioned this numerous times in a lot of different discussions with the Board of Finance about how the special education budget has gone through the roof. Now, he can't speak directly on a lot of different things because of the way that whole special education system is set up. My mom was a special education teacher for 45 years, so I know a lot about the process. I also know that the education systems all across the country are not delivering the needs that those students need, but at the same time, we can't afford to deliver more services. So we're in this quandary with special education especially, and that is a large demographic issue with adding in the affordable housing into a town. So I'm just asking, as you guys go forward into budget discussions and everything, that you have a better understanding of how that, the decisions that are being made at the town level, not necessarily the Board of Education level, are affecting the town through our demographics. They affect it in other different ways. There's a few other things in, I'm going to step down a little bit away from that end of things, but the Board of Education also, we put in the Miracle League, which I was a supporter of, I think is a great thing for the town. But again, as outbound marketing to residents coming in, we're marketing our town for parents and students with special education needs. So therefore, we need to turn around and support those kids with more money and more services. This is all coming away from your typically developing student, which is how they term those kids. So what are we going to do to support those kids? Because my students don't have any gifted or talented programs, we're taking away AP classes, we're getting rid of middle school sports, we're, we're taking away, we're taking away from that core population, the things that they have, the advancements in school. So I don't feel like the education system in town is as good as it was when I went to school, and it's supposed to be getting better. There, we put a freeze on supplies, and I'm going to talk about, like I said, a few things that don't have to do with this, but.
Sir, you do have a five-minute limit, so.
Okay.
And you're, you've been past it, but go ahead and finish up.
No, that's okay. I'll, I'll come back at a different meeting.
No, there's no one else after you, so if you want to take another minute or so, go ahead, but it's up to you.
Okay. So the only other things I wanted to say was that we, we put Band-Aids on three schools, and again, the town knew this in advance when we put the Band-Aids on it. And the Board of Finance said, we're not going to do anything else because we have a public safety complex coming, and we don't want to affect our bond rating. But they knew in advance that there was going to be things that were going to need to be replaced in these schools that they put Band-Aids on. So now we're needing a new boiler, we're needing this, we're needing that. Well, those things were mentioned up front. I sat in those Board of Finance meetings and listened to the people explain this, and those are the costs that are coming down the road now. So, and I have other things to address with that, those costs, but there's other costs coming that are based on decisions that were made outside of the Board of Education. And so that's why I was here tonight.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Anyone else wish to address the board? Okay, seeing none, we will enter into, take a motion, we have to go into executive session to include Attorney Mark Block and Attorney Cicely, Amanda Cicely.
Move to enter into executive session.
I'd like to request a five-minute recess if we could.
Okay, can we enter into it, and then we'll take, take that? Okay.
Move to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing real estate matters. Eastline Land Trust, Asavachi Hills, Hathaway Farms Property. The board entered into, is entering into executive session at 8:13.
Did you indicate to include? You need to indicate to include Mark Block and.
And to include Mark Block, yes.
And Amanda Cicely.
And Amanda Cicely.
Yes. Okay. All those in favor, say the favor saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we're in executive session, we'll be, take a quick five-minute break. Pardon?
And, okay. The board has returned from executive session at 8:56 PM, and no formal votes were taken.
Okay.
Move to adjourn the regular meeting of January 18th, 2023 at 8:57.
Okay, it just was the 57 when you said that too. Seconded by Dan, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are adjourned. Have a nice night, everyone.
I will.